...ten, the council meets three days per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. And for those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org. Audio of our meetings is available by council phone at (213) 621-CITY. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardness, Han, Riza, Coetz, Kukuiyan, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First item of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Park moves, Mr. Cardness seconds. Next item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Wesson moves, Mr. Coetz seconds.
Do you wish to go into the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to quickly go through the agenda.
Items one through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. Reports have been submitted and distributed to the council on items number four and five. And there is a community impact statement on item number seven that has been submitted and distributed to the council from the Wilmington Neighborhood Council.
Mr. Parks?
I'm sorry? We've approved both reports on number eight.
Okay. And can we open the roll on the rest of those items, please?
Ask for specials.
Any specials members?
Call it special.
Alright, item six is called special. Any other specials members? If you would please open the roll on the remaining items.
Seven for Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale has asked that seven be called special?
Any speakers? Speaker Perez.
Open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Items nine through fifteen are items for which public hearings have been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There are cards on items nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen.
Alright, members, any other specials?
This is Han, the great councilman of the fifteenth, item fourteen.
Alright, thank you. If we can, item twelve and item fourteen. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Um, that takes us to the closed items for a special meeting at 10:15.
Alright. Alright, next item of business, we will revisit that at 10:15. Well, let's see, we are at 10:15. 10:15? Alright, we have to wait? Alright, that's fine.
Edit you seven our presentation.
Alright, um...
That takes suspected presentations or items called special, or public comment.
Where is seven? Alright, Mr. Rosendale has requested that item seven be taken quickly out of order so that we can proceed with the presentation today. Uh, Dr. Clyde Williams, would you please come forward and speak on item seven at this time? Dr. Williams?
My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Burnt Road, Elsino, Northeast LA. Concerns: DOT is trying to develop something, however, enforcement, who's going to enforce all of this? It's a question as to the oversized vehicles, all of which generally are commercial. Commercial regulations are in place right now. It's more a matter as to how do you enforce it, if you do enforce it. There are many other sections other than the Wilmington or the West Side that also have plagues of oversized vehicles. However, the question is, when there's complaints that are submitted, there's no enforcement. Nobody comes and gives tickets, and commercial tickets can be quite expensive. So, as a matter, uh, why don't we just enforce the current rules? I don't know why additional DOT requirements are needed in order to meet this. So, such as having to put up signs? Most of the commercial vehicle operators know when they're in a violation. So, I would highly recommend that enforcement be provided within this in a timely fashion so that the rules can be enforced. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale?
Madam President. Is Yadi Yashima here from the city staff? If you're here, please come forward. Uh, colleagues, this was through the Transportation Committee the other day unanimously sent to the full council. Uh, what this does is give CD 11, as well as Ms. Han's area there, in the port, options another tool in the toolbox. The problem is, there are oversized vehicles, be they trucks on certain streets as Mr. Labange has talked about, uh, or Ms. Han has talked about. At the port, uh, there's been issues. We did a pilot project there, uh, in the port, as, as, in San Pedro, as well as in South Brentwood. This is tightening up the rules, and it does the following. It, it gives this restriction from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Restrictions will only restrict height or length without the need for a permit. It provides an option to residents who live in the coastal zone. It provides an additional tool for law enforcement, as they seek methods to address the storing of vehicles on city streets, long-term parking of oversized vehicles, illegal dumping, illegal lodging, et cetera. LAPD also supports this amendment. A process can be outlined by DOT and the council office for how signs go up, petitions, letters from LAPD, letters from council offices. Bottom line, it's a new tool in the toolbox, and we would like everybody's support on this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendale. Uh, we have two more speakers in the queue, uh, Ms. Han and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. I appreciate you sharpening this tool in the toolbox, because this was really an ordinance that I championed many years ago, because I was getting enormous amount of complaints from people who felt like, uh, the, you know, people's campers and RVs, they would park them, and they would be, some of them were caused blight, but most of the time it was a public safety issue. And people could not see around them when they were, you know, coming out of an intersection or coming out of their driveway. Uh, so it's actually proved successful, San Pedro area was one of the original pilot programs, as well as, as your district. Uh, and it's been successful, but this, you're making it even more successful by these amendments. And I think it will streamline the process. Uh, we know that people know in their neighborhoods where this is a problem, and we ask people to come forward and tell us it's going to be easier to post signs. And this will make for a safer, uh, city, um, neighborhood by neighborhood. So, thank you for sharpening these tools in our toolbox.
Mr. Labange?
Now, yeah, I just want to say it's good for neighborhoods, I appreciate this and balancing out. Both you, Ms. Han, and you, Mr. Rosendale. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Uh, Mr. Rosendale, there's no further speakers in the queue, so if you would, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Alright, thank you very much. And then we will forthwith on that item, please. Now, we will move back to the presentations, and I believe Mr. Wesson will be escorting, uh, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, Antonio Villagosa, and, uh, a group to usher in African-American History Month. So, with that, if we can please commence with the presentation.
Good morning, uh, Adam, President and members. Uh, we're, I want to welcome everyone to the opening ceremony of our African-American Heritage Month. I just kind of wonder, I, I liked it better when it was Black History Month, but I will go along, I'll go along with African-American Heritage Month. And I still, yeah, Black History Month, even though it is the shortest month, least number of days, I take issue with that. But today, we're honored with the presence of diplomats representing the following countries in the city of Los Angeles. If we could begin the procession, we have representatives from Belize, Burkina Faso, Brazil, Ethiopia, Kenya, St. Vincent, the Grenadines, South Africa, and Togo. I'll let you do that. That's the least that you deserve. It is my pleasure to bring up to the podium here, a great R&B recording off, uh, um, recording artist. He's gonna sing the Negro National Anthem. Now, after that, if you could give us just a little bit of "Put on that red dress." Just, just give us a, just, just give us a little shot of that. Ladies and gentlemen, Johnny Gill.
Till I inhale, but...
Come on.
With the heart of me, oh, it's a tear. Let our rejoice sing. Let it resound loud and raw, rolling steam. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has brought us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rise, sing song of a new day, beacon. Let us march on till victory is won. Yeah, let us march on till victory is won. Yeah, yeah. So, let us march on, let us march on, say, till victory, till victory is won. I'm not talking about, it might be next week, it could be ten years from now, but let us
Let's give Johnny Gill another round of applause. Another round of applause. I was asked several days ago to introduce the mayor of the greatest city on the planet. And when you introduce a mayor, you can talk about what school he graduated from, what offices he held, uh, major accomplishments. But I chose not to do that today. I am introducing to you my friend, who happens to be the mayor. Many years ago, he had a dream of becoming a member of the California State Assembly. I was then chief deputy to supervisor Yvonne Burke. And he needed a little favor, and he came and he asked if we could help him with the endorsement of the Sheriff's Union. I talked to Yvonne, she talked to the union, she was good with the unions at that time. And, uh, they went with him. To me, it was not a big thing, but it was something that he would never forget. Later, when he was speaker-elect, one of the most powerful men in California, I was running for the assembly. And I needed his help, but I had to figure out, how could I ask him for his support? Because I was running against one of his members' chiefs of staff, who was the Democratic endorsed candidate. Odds are, I was gonna lose. I didn't have to call him. He called me, gave me that endorsement. I introduced to you my friend. When I was elected, three freshmen were given chairmanships. I was one of them. My chairmanship was probably one of the four most powerful chairs in the California State Assembly. My friend did that for me, so that I could demonstrate my talents and leadership skills to the other members of the assembly, so maybe one day, I could become Speaker of the California State Assembly. He had a very serious back surgery. The doctors told him to stay in bed. But when I was elected, the second African-American to be Speaker of the state of California, Antonio, my friend, got out of his bed and came to the swearing-in ceremony. That was my friend, was not my mayor. When my two sons were in a serious automobile accident, one of them almost died, it was my friend, Antonio, who reached out to me and my family. When my mother was in Cedar Sinai Hospital recovering from cancer surgery, my friend was running for mayor. It was a Saturday, which is the biggest campaign day of the week. There are a lot of babies to kiss and hands to shake on Saturday. Unannounced, Antonio, without fanfare, comes to my mother's hospital room on Saturday at noon, stays over one hour, doesn't take one phone call, doesn't make one phone call. That was my friend. Ladies and gentlemen, I have met two people in my life that I truly believe are colorblind, that, that judge people based on their deeds and their actions and not on the color of their skin. The first man I met like that, Janice, was your father. The second man I met like that is my friend, Antonio. So, it is a pleasure and an honor for me to present to you my friend, who just happens to be the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. Let's give it up for our mayor, Antonio Villagosa. Beautiful, beautiful, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Let me acknowledge, um, City Attorney Trutanich and Controller Gruhl, who are here, uh, and like to ask them to come and join us as well. And I know that Assembly Member Mike Davis is here as well, and I'd like to acknowledge him. You know, Herb Wesson is a special man. In no small part, because I was showing our honorees today some pictures, and one of them was with Willie Brown. And wherever I go, I've always acknowledged that the first African-American speaker, Willie Brown Jr., was my mentor. Willie, without question, if there's one person that I would point to, who helped me along the road to become Speaker of the California State Assembly, was Willie Brown. One of the things that Herb and I have talked about many times, I, in no small part, played a role in helping Herb Wesson become Speaker. And then Herb Wesson played a role in Fabian Nunez becoming Speaker. And Fabian Nunez, Herb Wesson, Willie Brown, and Antonio Villagosa had a role in helping and nurturing and paving the way for Karen Bass to become Speaker, the first African-American woman to be Speaker. You've really set the stage, Councilmember Wesson, because of course, this isn't about me or her. But this is about why we celebrate African-American Heritage Month in the way that we do. Look at this room. This chamber is filled, and there are people outside that want to come in. What we have said in this city, we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, when we celebrate Hispanic or Latino Heritage Month, when we celebrate Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage Month. That here, in this city, the most diverse city anywhere in the United States, and maybe the world, the city where the world comes together, where forty-four settlers, twenty-six of whom were of African heritage, first founded this city. That here, when we celebrate these ethnic heritage months, and specifically this month, we don't just celebrate great African-Americans, we celebrate great Americans, great Angelinos. You see, and you really set the stage, uh, for today's honorees. You see, what we celebrate is our interconnectedness. What we celebrate is the fact that we may come from other continents, from around the world, but we came to this great city, the city of the angels, with the same dream. We want to, we want to make it here, because this is the place that doesn't care who your father was, or in my case, don't care if you didn't have a daddy. You know? They just say, just do it. And today, we acknowledge some people, and first of all, let me thank Johnny Gill. Man, lift every voice and sing, brother. And what a beautiful voice you have, and thank you for joining us here today. And I know that with us today is two-time Grammy gospel duo, Mary and Mary's in the house. Let's give them some love. There they are. How are you? And, you know, I'm, everybody here knows, and I've said this many times, and I want to thank this council, because every one of you, with the exception of two who were not on the council at the time, but supported us in the legislature. I've said many times, this issue of education is the civil rights issue of our time. There are not, there are no longer, uh, you know, the National Guard blocking the schoolhouse door. But the lack of success in many of our schools is as insidious as it was before Brown versus education. And I want to acknowledge the young people from Gompers, who are here with us today. Gompers is in the house. And for our honorees, if you don't know, Gompers was one of the lowest performing schools in Los Angeles, in the heart of Watts. Gompers was a school with five bathrooms broken for five years. Gompers was a school with five bathrooms broken for five years, with graffiti all over the locker rooms. Gompers was a school where the lack of success in that school was pandemic throughout the school. And you look at today, every bathroom works. We've got success at Gompers. We're on the way to showing what people can do when we work together as a community. So I want to acknowledge those young, successful, soon-to-be lawyers and doctors and teachers and architects and great Angelinos, and one day may be honored here as well. One day may be honored right here as well. And before I, you know, Mr. Wesson, you gave me a wonderful introduction, but I see the council president here, and I don't want to wear out my welcome. So let me begin with our acknowledgement here. I know you have much work to do. But it is important that we honor these Angelinos, that we honor these great Americans, that we honor these individuals who happen to be African-American, but transcend the place they've come from, their experiences in a way that all of us celebrate today. And I want to begin with the spirit of Los Angeles honoree today. You see, this young man, and I say young man, because he's younger than me, is well-known here in City Hall. He worked for Tom Bradley when he was 20 years old, 21, looked like he was 12. He, he was there alongside the man who made it possible for Antonio Villagosa to become mayor. The man that made it possible for, to have the kind of diversity we have on this city council today. And I'd like to call up Tavis Smiley if I could. You know, we recognize Tavis today for his public service, for his work in the trenches. This was a man who was there all alongside the man who will go down in history as LA's greatest mayor. A man who saw upfront what it was like to be the first, who understood that the role of the first was to open up the door for the rest. He went on, as you know, to work through his foundation, to develop and nurture leadership, to reach out to thousands of our young people. Every time he has a conference, he calls me, and I show up. And whether it's about the digital divide, or about access to higher education, he's there advocating on behalf of these young people. We all know that he understands that empowerment is about nurturing our future leadership. And today, as I understand, more than 6,000 young people have participated in his foundation's leadership conferences and workshops, college fairs and health fairs, voter registration drives, and town hall meetings among our youth, nurturing entrepreneurism, and the list goes on and on. I can tell you, we all have seen him and watched him grow over the years. We've seen him on the Tavis Smiley Show. I've actually been on from time to time. Not enough, by the way. But I can tell you that every time he engages you, it's provocatively. We were in our office right now in a provocative debate, all of us. Shaka Khan and Tavis Smiley and Jamie Foxx, we love his passion. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my colleagues here, I want to acknowledge you for the spirit behind that passion, for the spirit that drives you in everything you do.
Very quickly, first of all, thank you to the mayor for this wonderful recognition, to the City Council President, Mr. Garcetti, to all the members of the council who are present here today, to the City Controller, who I worked with when I was in the mayor's office. Thank you for this recognition, to the city of Los Angeles and all the great citizens of the city of Angels, thank you for, for this honor. I was just thinking very quickly this morning, as I woke up and turned on the television and saw that you'd be debating today and hearing today from the CAO about possible layoffs for the city of Los Angeles. I thought about the fact that when I first came to LA to work for Tom Bradley, I got caught up at the time, for almost two years, in a hiring freeze, before I could take the job that I'd been offered because of a bad economy. And when I left the mayor's office, I left the mayor's office being downsized out of the mayor's office. So I know how difficult these issues are to wrestle with, but I also know that only in a place like LA, could you get caught up in a hiring freeze, get downsized out of a job in the mayor's office, and show up a few years later to accept with humility this award. So thank you very much.
Hey, baby, I like that. The moral of that story is you can't get hired if you didn't get fired, right? And of course, in addition to celebrating the spirit that LA is all about, LA's always been about the dream. The dream, that California dream, that American dream, but in LA, it happens on a scale and a scope, I believe, second to none. And that's what makes us the greatest city on the planet. And a woman who knows dreams is a woman that I've, I've known, feel like I knew her, because I watched and listened to her, to her way back. In fact, for those of you, and probably most of you don't remember, because you're all too young, I remember when she was with Rufus. That's how old I am. That's how, that's how old I am. So I'd like to bring up Shaka Khan. Come on, baby, come on, baby. And I wanted her to stand next to me, because most of you know her for her singing voice. You know her for that, that incredible charisma and presence she has on the stage, powerful voice. But I, have I had an opportunity now, in the four years I've been mayor, to watch her, to work with her in her work around philanthropy, in the work with her foundation. You know, I acknowledge some young people from Gompers. These are young people that Shaka Khan is working with, and her foundation is working to mentor, to provide a guide and a light. Just like her voice lifts us up, the way the national anthem did just a few minutes ago. She's lifting up our kids, because she recognizes the responsibility that we have when you have success and fame. She's working to get these young people into college. She understands that in South LA today, on average, you know, three to seven, maybe 10 out of 100 kids qualify for a college education. And we want to change that. And she's worked as well with a disease, autism, that's becoming, you know, a pandemic disease. The rate of autism in our young people and our children has grown exponentially over the years. And I see her there, marching and talking and educating people. She's there every time we call her, and not just to sing, and she can sing. She's received 10 Grammy Awards, everybody. And a BET Lifetime Achievement Award. And by the way, I'm at the BET Awards every year, held here in Los Angeles. She's been nominated for 30 awards, including 22 Grammys, Lady of Soul Awards, BET Awards, and American Music Awards. This is a woman who is without question, one of America's divas. Please help me in welcoming a great citizen as well, Shaka Khan.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my friend, Mayor Villagosa, sweetheart, and a great, great soldier. It's such an honor to be the recipient of the Dream of Los Angeles Award. I've received many awards in my life, and I have to say, being honored for taking care of our children brings me great joy and a little bit of sadness. Sadness, because giving back should be normal, natural. It should be a requirement, not a privilege. Sadness, because when I look at the future of our children, I see high school dropout rates increasing, college admissions decreasing, and prison enrollment multiplying. Now, although we're gathered here in celebration, as an African-American, I don't think I've done enough. We have to do more to save our babies. But I'd like my legacy to be, it's not that I was a great singer, not that I got 10 Grammys, not that God has given me the ability to hit that high note, but that I was responsible for changing the lives for the better of many people. And that I was responsible for children going to college. And that I used my career to create dreams for our young people. And finally, when a child is asked, who do you attribute your success to? The response that I would like to hear is, Shaka Khan helped me. And that's why I'm successful today. Thank you, thank you very much.
Here you go, babe. Don't lose it. Don't lose it.
Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Actor, singer, comedian, producer, director, activist. Is there anything Jamie Foxx can't do? Man, I'll let you say, okay? I, I'll just repeat what I heard the lady say. They said, he's gorgeous. Now Jamie was the first African-American actor to be nominated for two Oscars in the same year. Only the second man in history to receive two acting nominations in the same year for two different movies. Through his work in front of and behind the camera, he's highlighted many hot-button social and political issues of the day. And I'm going to tell you something. I love, I love that conversation we had in our office a few minutes ago. Because you know what? Don't think for the moment, for a moment, that this brother couldn't run for office. Because let me tell you, he can talk at issues with a depth and a breadth that would rival any of those of us who are sitting here in public live today. I love his passion. Anybody who watches him on the screen, you can feel that passion. And you know, I believe that so much of what we do, no matter what it is that we do, it's got to start with passion. You got to feel it in here. You know, in the film, The Soloist, he inspired millions and brought attention to the issues surrounding homelessness and mental illness. And he did it in a way that I think, really put a spotlight on an issue that's very significant and profound in this city. His second single, Blame It!, in his album Intuition, is the most successful single from the album, peaking at number two on the US Billboard Hot 100, and topped the Hot R&B Hip-Hop Songs Chart for 14 consecutive weeks. We honor him, yes it does. But we honor him for all of the reasons we just said. This is a man who contributes to Los Angeles, the nation and the world, in so many different ways. Herb said, my friend said, he's a hell of a father too. And you know what? As well we should be. Because if it doesn't start with daddy, then it's going to be a long, hard road. And I know that better than anyone. Let me, and please help me, and welcome the hope of Los Angeles honoree today, Jamie Foxx.
First of all, I just want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this honor. This is amazing. When you talk about hope, I really exemplify that. As you said, we were having a heated discussion, myself and Tavis Smiley, about hope and other things. But I come from Texas, a small town, 12,000 people, growing up where the railroad track, you know, goes down the middle of the city. Where we'd have the black folks on one side and the white folks on the other side. And my grandmother said, you're not just going to stay on this side and just be, you know, a one, you know, one-dimensional. She taught me how to play the classical piano. And by playing the classical piano, I got a chance to go across the tracks and play for different wine and cheese parties, and I got a chance to... You know, I mean, I, you know, I got a chance to be highfalutin and all that kind of stuff. And, and, and when I went across the tracks, I remember a situation where I had to play for this Christmas party. And I went to this guy's house, it was, you know, big, nice country home. And it, it didn't, it didn't go so well at first. When I went there, he said, he said some pretty, 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 you know, unfortunate things to me that had something to do with the racial capacity. I won't go into it. But as I, as I started to play for his Christmas party, and he said, hey, man, you know how to sing? And I sung this song, chest... And you know what? He looked at me completely different. He said, I had no idea that you had all of that in you. And he was very instrumental at that time in helping me move from Texas and come to California, to Los Angeles, which I think is one of the most incredible cities in the world. Because, because I'm going to tell you why. When I got here, I saw all the different races that, that mixed. And everybody had confidence, you know, and everybody had, like I said, they had their dreams, they had their spirit, and I provided the hope. Although I'm African-American and I celebrate my African-American heritage, I still, you know, I, I got Latino friends too, just want to let you know. Duerme con los angelitos negritos porque también existen. But I, I just want to thank you, because we live in a very, very exciting time. And for the hope that my grandmother had, and for the hope that my family, my father, are here now, and all of my family, my sister and Deidre, and, and those beautiful African-Americans, that dark skin, that beautiful chocolate skin that we talk about all the time. It's just wonderful that we had that hope. And I, and I'm, and I'm glad that I'm living in this spectacular time. And like I said, in, in the back, Tavis, I, I still have my enthusiasm about that man who's, who's, who's president right now. who's president right now. And I know you have a tough job when you do your thing because of your heritage and the way you bring everybody together. You have a tougher job, and so does he. And I'll just give you a little bit of a rock right now. If there's any indication that America is not the most incredible country in the world, yes, we can. I got hope. Thank you.
Let me, and we'll end with a few more presentations, but no more speeches. But let me acknowledge Mrs. Vasi D. Reida, real estate broker from Paola, Kansas, and a group of Terminal Annex Postal Employees who founded our Authors Study Club on February fourteenth, nineteen forty-five, for the purpose of studying the biographies of African American authors, reviewing their books, and learn the true history of African Americans here in the United States. And Mrs. Reida recommended that the group affiliate with Dr. Carter G. Woodson's organization, now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. In June nineteen forty-five, Dr. Carter G. Woodson himself chartered our Authors Study Club as the Los Angeles branch. And I'd like to call up Dr. Genevieve Shepherd, who's been with us every year, and congratulate our Authors Study Club on their sixty-fifth anniversary. We celebrate this month today because they went to the city and said, "We should." And I want to acknowledge them And, look, these events, these four events that we do every year, and I just want to remind everybody, remember, this isn't just about a celebration in the chamber for ten minutes, or an hour. We have essay contests in the schools, we have poster contests, and one of the most beautiful things to watch is an Anglo-Jewish child winning a competition where he or she has written about the contributions of Martin Luther King. Or an African American student writing about Cecil Chavez. Or a Native American student writing about great contributions from Asian Americans and vice versa. We do this because we believe that in this city, we've gotta celebrate our heritage, our contributions, and our commonalities. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank Andrea Gibson and the Walt Disney Company, who supported us every year. We could not do this event. We could not we could not do these poster and essay contests without them. I want to acknowledge all of you. And we're gonna unveil the calendar, I believe. We're about to unveil the calendar.
To the right.
To the right.
With Dr. Shepherd. No, she's not here. But Andrea, Disney. The honorees are coming.
And if I may, a couple council members would like to add their good wishes, starting with Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Just quickly, I just want to say to my friend, Tavis, you know, what you've done on television is so important and so empowering. People spend eighty percent of their time getting their information from television. And for the most part, television is, if it bleeds, if it leads, it doesn't help people understand anything. But what you've created is a national show where you're able to let people finish their sentences and their thoughts. You listen to what they say, and your next question comes out of that. I just want to thank you for your contribution to all of us in understanding things and knowing how to connect the issues with ourselves. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Good morning, and congratulations to our honorees, Jamie Foxx, Chaka Khan, and Tavis Smiley. I'd like to just say a few words about Tavis. You're someone, I admire all of your work. Trust me, you're all very talented, and you're at the top of your game within your respective fields. But Tavis, you're someone who's been coming up through the ranks and someone who's being noticed, not only locally, but nationally. And one of the things that I really admire about you is that, at least on this day, and I believe that soon you're probably gonna be working maybe on a different channel or what have you, but you're working through public broadcasting. And you're bringing to light, as my colleague Rosendahl said, you're bringing to light issues that people need to understand. You're bringing people on your show, and you manage to do that in a way where you're not the focus, but you're the impetus and the catalyst for bringing that dialogue to bear, so that people can be enlightened, and so that people can understand really what's going on. So if you could stand up, I want people to know who I'm talking about. I'm talking about you, Tavis. And this is something that one of my staff members brought to me. This is Bertha Velazquez. She works for me. But there's a young man back here that used to work for a council member. And this is her staff. And unless I'm mistaken, that's you. Did you used to work for a council member here in the city of Los Angeles? Pat Russell. That's Pat Russell right there. And there's a group of young people. Hairdo is a little bit different than today. But what I would like to think, in all seriousness, what I would like to think, that the fact that you're standing in the back isn't that you are the tallest one in the room. The fact that you were standing in the back, that you knew that being part of the team didn't mean you had to stand in front. Being a contributor didn't mean that you had to overshadow. Being someone that's making a difference doesn't mean that you have to make a name for yourself, but that you're a man of faith, and you're a man of trust, and that you understand that all things come to bear in due time. And that with your patience and your respect, that's why you're standing in the back. But the reason why we're honoring you today is because of your faith and your respect and your patience. And I respect you very much. I look up to you. And I wish you the best, and I pray for you, that you will, you will be one of the strongest voices, one of the most heard voices in all of the land, because I do believe that you believe in what you're doing. This is not about show with you. This is about substance. So, like my parents always told us, they told their eleven children, "Always be respectful at every moment. Always do what you're supposed to. Always be mindful that people are watching. And I'm watching you, and I love you for it. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to to honor everyone as we begin our African American Heritage Month kickoff here in Los Angeles. And I really want to congratulate the honorees, Chaka Khan, Tavis Smiley, Jamie Foxx, and Johnny Gill. I will tell you, that was the most beautiful rendition of the Negro National Anthem that I have ever heard in my life. But Tavis, I was sitting here thinking, you know, you and I both were on the campaign trail together in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, where we were both attempting to be elected to the city council. We both lost that election, and look at you now. Look at me. Just a councilwoman. But it's clear, you know, timing is everything, and that wasn't meant to be for either one of us, but I think for both of our lives, we've certainly been blessed in amazing ways that probably wouldn't have happened if we had gotten elected the first time. And Chaka Khan, I just want to say, what you said was so important. And I want to give a big shout out to those young people at Gompers who are here today. And I will tell you, the most important thing we have is to keep these kids in school, out of gang violence, graduating from high school, going on to college. I represent Watts on the city council, and I still have so many young people who are afraid to walk to school. They are afraid to walk to school. And many of them tell me they don't even know if they're gonna make it till their sixteenth birthday. Well, if we can do anything, as we again recommit ourselves to African American Heritage Month, let's remember that we are living African American history right now. And you all are part of that. The President and the First Lady are part of that. We have the first African American Attorney General that we've ever had, who came to Watts, who came to Watts. You remember that, Mr. Mayor? You brought him to Watts, and he met with the young people of Watts and gave them a hope and a future. So thank you all. It's great that we're honoring you. Congratulations to everybody.
Mr. Coretts.
Well, of course, I want to congratulate our wonderful honorees for all the great work that they've done. And I was hoping that Chaka Khan would sing "Tell Me Something Good," but I guess I guess he can't have everything. But I actually want to talk about someone who hasn't been mentioned enough here, and my first political hero, the late, great Mayor Tom Bradley, the mayor of Los Angeles. To take nothing away from my current mayor, it's not the fact that that he spent twenty years as mayor, which we'll never see again in the city of Los Angeles, and provided incredible leadership for those twenty years. But most notably, he brought together an incredible coalition, which we called the Tom Bradley Coalition at the time, of every race and every ethnicity, young and old, rich and poor. And I can tell you, young for sure, because I was so inspired when I was in junior high school. I spent literally every day after school, and every every daylight hour on the weekends, walking door to door for Tom Bradley in his first election. And that inspiration and that that unifying effort, I think, really made a difference in the city of Los Angeles. And was, for the first time, he was the person that brought our melting pot together and got everyone to work together. Certainly a goal that we should always aspire to in the future. So I just wanted to mention that, and thank you all for being here and all the great work that you all do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coretts. We did not know your musical past. Mr. Parks is our next speaker, and then Mr. Labons. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so pleased to see all of you. And, Tavis, I want to, before you leave, you have to tell everybody about your demonstration project over at the museum. Because everybody should go and see it. It's a remarkable achievement. It is something that currently the African American Museum and the Science Center have jointly put it together. And you must go through it. It's a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of history about African American culture. And it's because Tavis decided to do that. It's a traveling show. How long will it be in L.A.?
May second.
It'll be in L.A. till May second. It's something that everybody should be there before May second, because it is that important. And so I just want to say thank you for what you did on that. And certainly, I remember you when you were seventeen years old, running through the city of L.A. And certainly, you've done a remarkable job with your life as you move forward. And I want to thank you for that. And then, Chaka, I want you to know that you're the reason my grade point average dropped down, because that Rufus album, I had it on all my book covers. And you know which one I'm talking about? Lost total concentration for about five years. But you've you've done a remarkable job with your foundation, and you couldn't have a greater impact on people's lives, not only with your visibility and your celebrity, but to turn it into the foundation and help. And I want to say that Johnny Gill, it was totally unfair for you to start that song and think everybody's gonna sing along with you, and then hit that high note, and then shut everybody up for the rest of the song. That was something that was remarkable, on cue, just to walk up to a mic and make that kind of performance. I want to thank you. And Jamie, wherever you are, thank you for all your performance. We certainly, I think when we go back, I went to see the play about Ray Charles. And you can't see Ray Charles without thinking about the performance that Jamie Foxx did. In fact, you thought he was Ray Charles. And so it's something that we've had some remarkable talent here today. And Mayor, thank you for every year bringing a program for African American History Month. Or, as Herb says, Black History Month, or depending on if you're my age, it used to be called Negro History Month. And before that, it was Colored History Month, but that was only for an hour. But we are so pleased to see the progress that we've moved from an hour all the way through a month. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for all your accomplishments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, Madam Controller, all the honorees. I want to give a shout out to our postmaster, Mark Anderson, right here. Give him, he's gonna unveil a stamp. I also want to give a shout out to our fire chief, Chief Peaks, give him a big holler. Most importantly, I want to give a shout out to Olivia Mitchell, who, like myself, started with, she was the leader for Mayor Bradley. She was the Office of Youth Development. She nurtured Wendy Gruehl, Ed Reyes, Paul Coretts, Tom Labons, Mark Ridley Thomas, and thousands of other young people with the Office of Youth Development. Olivia Mitchell, give her a big hand. And lastly, as Mr. Coretts spoke of, Tom Bradley, do not let this day pass without going to the Tom Bradley Tower. Do not let this day pass without overlooking this city and seeing what it is today. God bless everybody in this room, and this is a great month that we continue to celebrate the great heritage of African Americans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alakon.
Wow. Johnny Gill, Jamie Foxx, Chaka Khan, and Tavis Smiley. I have to say, for some reason, I'm reminded not to disparage our mayors and our former Speaker of the Assembly's college. But when I chaired the College and University Admissions Select Committee at the State Senate, one of the things that I was investigating was the the promotion of African Americans to admittance into UCLA. And it was very sad to learn that not one African American was admitted into the Musical Arts Program with a special grant. Notwithstanding the fact that we have such amazing talent and history in that community. They are changing. I'll say that. UCLA has a new chancellor with a new perspective, and he's doing a better job. But it's sad that we cannot take this talent and do more with it in an academic way. And so, congratulations to all of you. But I really, I have to stand up because I was a counterpart for Mr. Tavis Smiley. He's got a thousand counterparts now. He's a counterpoint. But it was my honor to be identified and promoted by Mayor Bradley. And at one point, Tavis and I were working as area coordinators for Mayor Bradley. And I have to admit something. This is a confession. Wendy will verify it. We're all a little jealous of Tavis. We're jealous, not because he was talented, not because he was better looking, but we were jealous because we knew the mayor liked him better. And I think the mayor liked him because he was a visionary. Mayor Bradley was a visionary, and he knew talent when he saw it. And so he knew that Tavis had incredible potential. And Tavis, you know, it is what you have achieved in terms of becoming a national commentator is far beyond anything that could have been imagined. And I know that you didn't imagine it at the time. But more than anything else, you never stopped being Tavis. And that's what I appreciate about Tavis Smiley. Thank you for being who you are, because we needed that message. And I frankly wonder who might be president had you not been available to keep that message going. But I do think, not to take away from our president's talent on his own, but I absolutely believe that you contributed to a dialogue that needed to happen, a debate that needed to be heard, and action that eventually led to us having the first African American president. God bless you. Thank you for the work you do. And I'll never forget watching you work in the mayor's office, running around, not knowing what you were doing, because you were doing it in a different part of town, but knowing that someday we'd be talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Sein.
Oh, thank you. Uncle Herb Wesson, your loyal nephew.
Uncle Herb Wesson, your loyal nephew from Lebanon. I just wanted to acknowledge our mayor and congratulate the recipients, mayor of the people of the city of Los Angeles, whether it's African American, Latino, Persian, Middle Eastern, doesn't matter, the mayor that welcomes with that olive branch all people in the city of the angels. Mr. Mayor, I know we've acknowledged groups in the council chambers many times, you are personally here for those activities to show your support for the diversity of Los Angeles, so I want to acknowledge the mayor for being here, supporting this particular month of significant recognition. And to our controller, and to our city attorney, and to my colleague who sits next to me, Herb Wesson, for putting this together, for coming and speaking and showing support. We are a diverse city, there's no question about that, but we are a united city, and the diversity and a united city is what makes us the great city of the angels. So to the recipients, congratulations, you've done well, and you are an inspiration. We have sports figures that are inspiration, each and every one of you is an inspiration, and that's what we look at, and hopefully what Janice Hahn said, my colleague, that if more people will look at the inspiration that you bring, and this month that we're going to be celebrating, knowing that the opportunities are there, all they have to do is seek those opportunities and follow that path to success, as each and every one of you has done, and all the audience. Thank you for being here. God bless you all, and, Mr. Mayor, again, I love you like a brother, but you are my Uncle Herb Wesson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to add to the acknowledgements, and thank you for all the luminaries who are here today. You're a part of living history, and as the children watch this and look from the back, they can see people who've contributed so much to the betterment for everybody's family. And also, you know, to acknowledge Mr. Peaks, again, Chief Peaks, and our own Commissioner of Public Works, former President of the Board of Public Works, Valerie Shaw, and John Reamer, Cora Fawcett, President of the Black Employees Association, and Dee Allen from the Environmental Affairs Department, and also to acknowledge and thank those, especially the Black Employees Association, for bringing their wonderful check downstairs yesterday during our 12-hour fundraiser on behalf of the people of Haiti, our brothers and sisters in the Caribbean. Appreciate it very much. I know Mr. Parks and I appreciate it very much, and I think we topped out the day at over $100,000, just for standing out in the street. It's a testament to the goodwill and the kindness of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Mayor.
Again, I just want to thank you all, and all I can say to Mr. Parks, I'm glad it was you that mentioned that front cover Rufus album, because if it had been me, it'd be on TV as I speak. So with that, let me thank you all for hosting us again, and again to our honorees and to all the people who are here. I love Los Angeles. We love Los Angeles, and the best thing about Los Angeles is its people. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and we, I know there's going to be a celebration in the forecourt as well. Mr. Wesson, turn the microphone to you.
Yes, okay. Today's my favorite Friday. It's Pet Adoption Friday. We've been doing this for about four years, very successful. If I could have somebody bring Cody up, and maybe my wife, since she's here, could come up as well. Fabian, Fabian. You want to hold him?
Yes, I do. If he appeared, I've already held him once.
If we do, now we have the camera on. This is the animal of the hour. His name is Cody. He's about five years old. He is a Chihuahua mix. He behaved very well during the ceremony, even though he's never seen this many people in his entire life. So I will ask, if you're watching this on television and you'd like to adopt Cody, please Again, that's 888-452-7381. Anybody that's here in City Hall that wants this little Chihuahua mix will keep Cody here for a little while after the presentations, so you can come down and speak to the Animal Services representative. Again, companion animals are looking for a home. Cody is one of those animals. I am asking you, whoever you are, wherever you are, to please adopt Cody, because when you adopt him, you will be saving his life. Every dog and cat that's adopted, you are saving their lives. We don't just have some giant farm where we keep hundreds of thousands of animals. We have six shelters, and we do the very best we can to get these dogs adopted. So my wife is, does that mean Cody's not coming home with us? No, Cody's not coming. I thought, Cody, we had a shot, but I'm already at the limit where it relates to my animals. But again, please, let's find Cody a home. Let's find him a home today. He's got his shots, he's microchipped, he's ready to go. If you're interested, call 888-452-7381. Ask for Cody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and before you leave, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesson, and thank you, Fabian, for being his loyal assistant today. But I just want to remind the people watching that Cody's a beautiful dog. Cody deserves to be with a wonderful family. Cody deserves to be outside of the shelter, but unfortunately, the truth of the matter is, as you pointed out, Herb Wesson, Cody needs to be adopted, because we cannot keep Cody forever. We cannot keep Cody forever, and the best thing that could happen to Cody is that a responsible person, a responsible family, call that 888 number and say, you know what? I would love to adopt Cody. So please remember, we can't keep Cody forever. The reason why we're showing you Cody is because we can't keep him very long, we need somebody to step up, we need somebody to say, you know what, I'm in love with this little guy, I'm going to adopt him. So please, please understand, this is about Cody's life we're talking about. We haven't failed yet, right, Herb? We always get these dogs adopted when you bring them forward to the city council. Let's not let this be the first one. Don't assume that somebody else is calling. If you love that pretty face, if you love that cute little face, please adopt Cody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Carruthers.
I would just say we've never had this many people in council chambers, so hopefully one of the folks that are here will take a look at this dog and find it a great home.
Thank you very much. With that, just before our public comment, Mr. Zine asked for number six to be out of order. Would you like to take that up just before a public comment, and we'll come back to public comment as the second order business?
Okay, thank you. If we can get some order in the chambers, Mr. President.
Yes, if I can ask the sergeants-at-arms to help. We can ask folks to please move to the back of the chambers and outside. Thank you very much for your patience. We'll take up item six, and then public comment will follow just after that, because I know there's some staff on a deadline as well, Mr. Zine. I'd like to recognize you for the first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. On number six, this deals with the trailers, unhitched trailers, that are used for advertising purposes throughout areas of the city of Los Angeles, and I just wanted to let the communities know, and Channel 7 just did a report, things that irritate community members, and advertising trailers, one of the major issues that irritate people in the city of Los Angeles, that we are moving forward with state legislature and with our city attorney to ban them from the city of Los Angeles and hopefully the state of California, where you will not be able to have a trailer as an advertisement go into a community. What we find is that those trailers get vandalized, they move into traffic during the winds, they get swept away in the rains, and they're basically a nuisance blight in the community. So we are working to eradicate them from the city of Los Angeles. The number-one complaint I get in my office is the advertising trailers. The people don't care what they're advertising. The fact is, the trailers themselves have become a major nuisance. We worked with the city attorney to establish an ordinance where we post signs, no unhitched trailers, and the people that move those trailers around disregard those signs, and the $49 ticket is not enough deterrent to keep them from disrupting neighborhoods. So I just wanted to say for the record that we are moving forward, and hopefully, when we complete, we will be able to remove those and have some other form of advertising for people, but not those trailers that have advertisements. And if you go throughout the valley, you will find them on major thoroughfares. They're quite a disruption to communities, both residential and business. So I just wanted to make for the record that we're doing that. I thank the Department of Transportation, the city attorney's office working with us, and hopefully, our state assembly will work with us, Councilmember Smith's office is also working with us, to address this issue. So hopefully, we'll get it resolved, and they will be illegal to be in the city of Los Angeles on the roadway. So thank you, Mr. President, and we will be back with more information on that.
Thank you. Mr. Carruthers is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Smith. Mr. Carruthers.
I certainly agree with my colleague, Councilmember Zine. This is not only a public safety hazard, they often park them near exits and entrances to driveways, block visibility, they're a blight, they're a danger, and like Councilmember Zine, they're the most complained-about item in my council office, particularly on the valley side of my district. We have to do everything we can to get rid of these, and I look forward to the day when we've figured out a citywide way to eliminate them and a statewide way as well.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you, and we put this through the Transportation Committee the other day, and historically, Tom Labange and Janice Hahn started the process, but we went through committee and approved it. I want to thank Dennis Hathaway from the Coalition on Billboards, who's played a leadership role on this, and I want to thank the community that also feels the same energy we do. This is outrageous and unacceptable behavior, and we're instructing the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to create a one-page information document on the laws, the rules, and regulations regarding unhitched trailers on streets. We have some tool in the toolbox, not enough, we need more support out of the state. This is a great moment to move forward with, and thank you, Mr. Zine, for your opening comments on it as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Zine and I have been working on this for quite some time. We're very close to it, and Mr. Zine had introduced a motion with Mr. Carruthers, 092140, which I understand is now cleared. The city attorney's given us some definitions, and we need to get this into the Plumb Committee. Mr. Reyes is not here, although he is on the queue today, no, he's off still. So we just, we need to ask Mr. Reyes to get this into committee, or let it go through Plumb, and just direct the city attorney to draft that ordinance so we can fix this problem. It is a growing problem. It started kind of in Mr. Zine's district. It has bubbled throughout the city now, and we need to do what we have to do as a legal authority in the city to take control of it. So we're going to ask Mr. Reyes to get this moving quickly, so we can get it into council and resolve this problem, which will change everything Mr. Rosendahl's asked for, but I think we need to change the law, and that's what we have to do, so, thank you.
Thank you all very much for your comments. We now have a vote before us on the motion. Will you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, and we will send that forth without objection. We're going now to public comment. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Eddie Jones Jr. is our first speaker, and then after that is Ida Talala. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President Garcetti. How are you?
Very well, thanks.
First of all, I want to say to all of city council, I want to thank you very much for this wonderful African American Heritage Month. I want to thank the city council also for doing what's being done for Haiti, and also we are here today with some children who came in today to the chambers, who are being educated and learning how the process of running the city goes. My name is Eddie Jones, President of the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association, and we're teaching the kids that they have a human constitutional and civil right to exercise their rights here, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but around the world. So here I have LaShane, who, his brother was Bo Taylor, who had a nice radio show, and they have a mentoring group, and they just launched their organization, so I just wanted him to have a little time. We have two.
Thank you, Eddie Jones. I just want to say thanks to council, the mayor, and all the wonderful guests for allowing us the opportunity today. We launched the Bo Taylor Foundation for Cancer, going to help a lot of individuals that are affected with this deadly disease, and we have a Taylor Family Foundation for Kids, where we reach out to at-risk youth. We actually have a group with us today, right behind us from Saya, Long Beach. Right behind us, we have all of our staff members, and we're going to have a graduation for them February 13th in the city of Long Beach, so you all are invited to attend.
So in closing, President and city council, these kids are learning leadership, motivation, integrity, dignity, discipline, social skill, and etiquette, being here in the chambers today. So I want to thank city council, I want to thank the president, and keep up the wonderful work that the city of Los Angeles is doing. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones, Mr. Taylor. Good to see you, and thank you to the students for being here. You set an example, a great example for all of us. Thank you. Our next speaker for general public comment is the one, the only neighborhood champion from Echo Park, Ida Talala.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to voice my concern, the honorable council president, and honorable city council members. I'm here to discuss the questionable practices of the neighborhood councils. I think, given the city's fiscal crisis and every dollar extended has to be utilized in a judicious manner, the city controller has provided an excellent audit on neighborhood councils, and it's invaluable because it benefits the neighborhoods that you want served. In about six weeks, about 90 neighborhood councils will be electing about 1,500 representatives. I ask the city council to take an astute look at this expenditure, as the abuse of power and indifference makes this expenditure a wasteful exercise. Elected reps fail to show up at meetings. One rep has only showed up at two out of 29 meetings in the local neighborhood council that I serve. Neighborhood council presidents and boards act as supreme rulers and revoke with impunity the voting rights of elected representatives. I'm here to inform the city council, the city clerk, city attorney, and Dunn about the decision by the president of the Greater Echo Park Allee neighborhood council and his wife, the chief information officer, who without written notification or a full board hearing, have for the last 10 months revoked my voting rights and have created a climate where even a grievance hearing is a moot issue. I am sorry, I am putting all the documentation here.
Thank you. We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets that. Thank you very much, Ida.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments this morning. John Walsh is our next speaker. After Mr. Walsh will be Luanna Allard.
Good morning, council people. I'm Luanna Allard, and President of the Hillside Village Property Owners Association, who are a volunteer membership that's been around for over 60 years, that consists of residents, property owners, and merchants that promote the highest integrity in our neighborhood, which is located in the 14th district. At our last general meeting, one of the major votes, with a majority vote, in favor of organizing our community protest, which will be held tomorrow, Saturday, in front of our local fire station from 10:00 to 12:00. We are fighting against losing our paramedic engine at Fire Station 16, and we will send the message that brownouts create an unfair impact on us. This is a single-engine fire station, and we are at the city's eastern boundary and cannot rely on backup like other stations. We live in a very high-fire-zoned hill with substandard winding roads, and our hills catch fire regularly every year. We have called and emailed Councilman Wezar, who isn't here today, and... We have called and emailed Councilman Weisar, who isn't here today, and they know about this. To this date, we've not heard from him regarding this problem we're having. However, the battalion chief called me personally and asked him to confirm that the facts, and if this would end this crisis. He suggested that we cancel our protest, because they are not going to take away our fire unit from Station 16. He didn't say anything about taking the paramedics away, though. We fought long and hard to get a rescue unit and paramedics in Station 16. We're going to fight just as hard to try to keep them. Council members, we're here because we need your help, but it doesn't seem that that many people are here or paying attention when the public is speaking. Please help us keep our fire station in service at Station 16 and all of citywide. Everyone, all the residents need to know and check with their fire department to see what services they don't have. I have a press release, if anybody is interested.
Yeah, if you'd please give that to the Sergeant at Arms, ma'am. We'll make sure we get that. Thank you very much, Ms. Allard. Our next speaker is John Walsh. Our previous one was John Walsh, and after that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, sir.
Hello, John Walsh. Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S, a quarter of a million hits since September, visitors since September 3rd. We're here to talk about another black man, Oscar Grant. You know who Oscar Grant is? He was shot to death by the Oakland Police. He was on his, by Johannes Messerli, an Oakland policeman. He was on his stomach. We have a video. Why on earth? It must be crazy. Why am I talking about this guy? Well, the LA Times and the media hasn't told you that three weeks from today, his trial starts. Guess where it starts? Oakland, right? That's a no-brainer. No, it starts right down here in the criminal courts building, because Mr. Messerli and the LA Oakland Police got a change of venue, because they said a white cop could not get a fair trial in Oakland, a black Oakland, so he's been brought down here. Now, I'm a man of peace. HollywoodHighlands.org. You will not see this story in the media any place in the world, except at HollywoodHighlands.org. I have spoken to the anarchists. The anarchists do not want anything but peace. You must speak to the anarchists, or else during this trial, everybody from the world, the world anarchists are coming to LA. They're going to make it, if you don't watch out and you don't play right with them, they may make it into another Seattle. They may make it into another Rodney King. I'm worried that if he is found not guilty, or this man who shot to death a black Oakland policeman, and if you see it on CNN, there were gigantic riots. Again, there has to be a dialogue open between the anarchists and the mayor. I hand-delivered this to the mayor, and I would suggest Tom Hayden to speak and to do some facilitating, because on February 19th at 7:00 AM, the Oscar Grant trial begins in this city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will follow Dr. Williams. Is Dr. Williams here? Okay, Matt Dowd, if you'd like to come forward, sir.
It's all out of order. We love the chaos. The anarchists here already. John Walsh is a psychic. So anyway, I've just been reading through the appeal that your city attorney filed, Mooch. If you're out the back, it's a joke. They're trying to say now that Michael Hunt didn't have a particularized message, and Matt Dowd didn't have a particularized message. Now, look, Mooch, if you're out the back listening, drag Mike Claysons into your office and get him to tell you what happened at Pasadena with the Ninth Circuit mediator. They said, "We do not want to deal with it. In all our experience, this is not going to change. The city did well. You've already paid the money into the court, and now you're dragging the Ninth Circuit through a whole bunch of malarkey that's going to make it worse." And I don't really mind, because every day I come down here is just another day on the tab in the end. Because I know I had a particularized message, and I had a right to be there, so you're not going to be judging me on the content of my message. So you're just angering the court. It's pretty clear that you're just retaliating, and it's just, you know, it's a litany of things that you've put in front of us, instead of manning up like Herb Weson claims he could, and just settling the case like men, because it's already been decided by a judge, and your esteemed colleague, Bill Rosendahl, is on record saying that you would go with the judge. So now you're clearly just lying, and he's just a liar. So someone ought to get Bill Rosendahl and say, "Hey, how much is this going to cost in the end?"
Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dogg is next. After Mr. Dogg is Daniel Wiseman.
Yes, thank you. I'll be talking about the city attorney's office and losing 100 staff members to cover hundreds of millions of dollar budget deficit in a minute. First, I want to say for the record, the First Amendment is not defined by your lousy, faulty audio equipment that also does not work in Van Nuys, and it is not defined by your concern of the possibility of kids watching. That is what a federal judge says. Also, regarding the calling of speakers off-topic, please use your discretion and your discretion, much less discretionary. For example, if it's about Renescro, and I'm talking about the LA Marathon, clearly that's off-topic, but I think it's been being abused here. Thank you. Now, the budget, Council President Eric Garcetti on the news, saying that LA is in a full-blown budget emergency for double-digit, for double-digit down revenues, greatest since the Depression. I'd like to say, I hope Eric Garcetti never becomes mayor. I now refer to him as former mayoral candidate, and that is because, as council president, he's been the person in charge of guiding this council. There's no knowledge without prediction. There's no leadership without action, and I admire Mr. Garcetti for his Rhodes Scholarship, and he's very organized. I think he'd make a great deputy, a great chief of staff for a mayor, but again, it's a lack of heart, courage, and leadership, ability to get leverage on council, ability to make decisions. So now, on to the city attorney's office. Council and the mayor want to cut 100 staff from the city attorney's office. Did I only hear one-third of the story? Did I only hear one-third? I hear you want to cut 100 from Mooch's office. I didn't hear you say, "Cut any from yours." I didn't hear you say, "Cut any from the mayor's." So this is why the city's in big trouble, because they have hundreds of millions of dollars in budget deficit, and their solution is, "Well, we'll cut the department that's not ours." The mayor and council can both agree. Cut the city attorney, the defender of the treasury, but you can't make the tough decisions. That's why we are going to bankruptcy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. It would be an honor to be your chief of staff if you ever get there as mayor. Daniel Wiseman will be our next speaker, and Mr. Ben Resnick will follow.
It's a shame, Mr. Garcetti. Whoop. Does this thing work? All right. It's a shame that you got cut off even before you had a chance to start. Anyway, I'm looking forward to getting together with you sometime soon, as you know, and I hope all of you have the written material. I see something less than a quorum present, but I'm sure all of you will be able to see this. The material in back of this paper is the budget as it stands now, and a series of comments on that. I'll let it speak for itself. Resipulocoder is an old medical term that really got put on us by lawyers. However, what we're really dealing with here is the neighborhood councils, who really want to be able to help you to get this budget deficit decreased. Now, we have a great deal of resources to offer. I was just in the city administrative officer's office to find out that the data are not available yet, they were promised this morning, that the data are not in a format yet that can be used for analysis. In order to produce this document, I had to hand-copy everything, both from the city budget and from the Miguel Santana letter of last week. We have a great deal to offer you. I hope you will give us the chance to do so. Mr. Garcetti, as the leader, I'll look forward to meeting with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ben Resnick is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will follow.
Sorry about that.
Morning.
Members of the city council, I normally don't speak at public comment, but I'm rather angry here today. Today, you took another blow against building affordable housing in an area that deserves affordable housing. There's an item on your agenda today that you had speaker cards on it, had to do with a project I represent, that has an appeal pending, and this is a very low-income housing project.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Resnick, just to keep things consistent, this is for items that are not on the agenda, I know, and sometimes folks come to speak on that.
I understand. Okay, well, what's not on the agenda? What's not on the agenda?
Somebody would have to reopen it, or else we can't take it under general public comment, under the Brown Act.
I'm not asking you to take it under.
I know, we can't take comments on it under the general public comment.
Okay, I want to make a general comment about the unfairness of not allowing public hearings in the city council for items that you know are controversial, that material has been submitted on, and that matters have been placed. As a matter of general policy, not talking about the item, cards, when cards are submitted to your marshals, and the marshals are walking around with the cards, and they're not in yet, that should not be held against someone, because the item happens to be so fast on the agenda, and it goes through a consent. The end result is a blow to a project that's affordable housing. I think you should reconsider the way you decide when to vote on a consent item, when there's a known appeal that's pending, that's controversial, and ought to be erred before it is voted on consent that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I know item four was not here during that, but I believe that any member on items that have had, for items that have had a public hearing can always trigger that, but obviously, they're not automatically triggered, but thank you, decent piece of advice. Any other public comments besides Mr. Sacks? Mr. Sacks is our final speaker then for our general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to comment on Wednesday's city council meeting, especially your discussion on the backlog of hiring rate technicians to help clear up the backlog of the DNA cases. And it was quoted in here that there was a flaw in the system, that you were unaware that the committee on the hiring freeze had held up the personnel to be hired by the police department. I thought, actually, the system worked quite well. You actually acted back last year. You had either forgot, or you're, what, not aware that that committee existed? You knew you were going to act, you knew you had a stopgap chance for another committee or somebody else, a third party, to delay the hiring. You didn't send your actions forthwith to the mayor, which didn't put the actions into immediate effect with his signature. You let it just sit there. I was here when Chief Beck testified, when Councilman Garcetti asked him about the $700,000 needed to hire new personnel, 16 new technicians. The chief, the assistant chief at the time, said, "Well, we hired some personnel, but we didn't hire everyone, but the money has been spent." So now more money is poured in, more money is poured in. It's going to be outsourced. You want to fight the federal policy that requires those outsourced kits to be reviewed by the LAPD, but not your policies, not the city policies, the neglect on allowing the DNA kits to pile up. The fact that the police had a system, that if they didn't ask for the kids to be processed...
Thank you very much, sir. All right, there are no speakers in the queue on that item. Madam clerk, would you please open the roll?
Oh, general public comment.
General, oh, general public comment, I'm sorry. There's no more cards, there are no more cards for public, general public comment. So we will go on to the next order of business.
Item nine, called "Special for Cards."
John Walsh, followed by, I don't know who this is. The person has written some secret name on here, so I can't guess who it is, but it's not a name. So John Walsh.
Secrets@HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns, I'm reading, the Commerce Trade Tourism Committee. It concerns clean fuel connection, and it is under SEQA, and we 100% are in favor. Yes, people do come up here and occasionally say, "When you're right, you're doing a good job." We're not here, as we know, to occupy myself. Hollywood, one minute only, in fact, less than one minute. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. No speakers in the queue on that. Yes, sir. You did not fill out a card with your name on it. There's some joke name on there, it's not a name. I have no idea, you know who is. What is your name for the record, please?
You don't have to. Let's clear it up with the city attorney one more time.
Can we have your name for the record, please?
Please clear it up with the city attorney.
It's not required.
Please check with the city attorney.
Your name for the record?
You know who? Thank you. Yes, see, there's no agendas here. Who took all the agendas? First of all, I have to read it off the board up here now. See, it's just, just read the card, read the name, these are the things. It's just another thing that you failed.
No speakers in the queue, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Item 10, called "Special for Cards."
Mr. John Walsh, followed by Matthew Dowd.
Point of information, if you look at the law, it says that you don't even have to give your name, you don't have to give anything to speak here. This is America. People died in the 18th, in the 19th century, 17th century, 18th century, from what we have here. You can just put X down there, and you have to listen to us. Other countries were murdered. I want to say, you do a great job in a country that's about 90 miles from here, south of here. If I spoke like this, I'd be murdered, okay? I'd be killed. That's why I love this country, and I love you. Thank you. I'd just like to say, this is an important issue. Again, it concerns natural gas. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. One minute.
Okay, once again, I'm concerned with the lack of agendas in the room at the meeting, but yes, items like these, I'm concerned about, because I'm concerned with everything that the city of Los Angeles does now. It's got to the point where the most simple, basic thing, you just can't get it right. It goes all the way to the DNA kits, the budget, the pension money, the commissioners, LAPD. There's even a letter falling off the brand-new $500 million police building across the street. Unfortunately, it's the end.
Madam President, he is not talking about item 10.
I'm talking about how you're not doing it right. These things are suspect. Everything you do needs to be scrutinized.
Excuse me, stop for a second, please. We've received an admonition from the city attorney to please stay on topic, so I would urge you to do so.
I think I've finished. Thank you.
Please begin at the time again. Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item.
Item 11, called "Special for Cards."
All right, Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks, are you present? Following Arnold Sacks will be Mr. Zuma Dogg. Following Mr. Zuma Dogg will be Matthew Dowd. Is Mr. Dogg still here?
Yeah.
All right.
And it's back, yeah.
Thank you. On this mixed-use income housing project at Washington Boulevard, the permits vetted by the city council, gone through the process of Plum Building and Safety, the final construction, including any vetting for advertising that the public is unaware of by the developer or the owner or the builder, any of those permits vetted, that will come back before the city council and have a hearing, because they will be in violation of a so-called billboard ordinance, and the requirement of the low-income housing. Does that still stand up, even though the city lost its lawsuit that was filed by one of the downtown developers, requiring a set aside for low-income housing? And what exactly is the definition of low-income housing? Who fits that description? What portion of... What portion of the population is eligible for that low-income housing? Maybe it could be the staff of people who buy the condominiums at the building. Maybe they'll be the ones, and they'll live in the low-income housing. How do you, what is the cutoff, and what is the description that benefits, or that would let people know that they are eligible, or they fall into the category of low-income housing? Any information forthcoming on that?
Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you, good morning, city council, it's so nice to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today about this very important item. There, I want to sound like you guys. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for your leadership and courageousness on this item. I wanted to sound like Janice Hahn, 'cause I had nothing to do with it, but I'll thank everybody else. Okay, so, this is about affordable housing, a 41-unit mixed-income housing project, and it says here, "To waive the street widening requirements." I say, hell, yes, waive everything. Waive the street widening requirements, waive the zoning, waive everything, turn the blind eye like everything else you did, because you just went all upscale with the housing. We needed this affordable housing all along, all right? And so, what you did is, you built all million-dollar condos, half a million-dollar condos, luxury, nobody can afford it. Oh, by the way, did you turn on the news this week? CAO Miguel Santana said that everybody was driven out of town that can afford to live here, and we just suffered double-digit revenue drops for four quarters in a row. That means it's a Great Depression, people, and it's because of your policy, through your fraud, waste, and abuse. So you now need to get this project done for affordable housing, because you're having so many people, that, oh, you're gonna be firing thousands of people! I forgot, please waive the sidewalk variance, because you're about to fire thousands of employees. That means they're not gonna have money, that means they're gonna need affordable housing. Meanwhile, I'd like to admonish city council of historic proportions, and special note to Councilmember Herb Wesson, who sat there as the housing chair, and destroyed the character of the city forever and ever and ever, and all of this affordable housing, that now you're trying to do after the fact, after you got a Great Depression, after nobody can afford to live here, after you're gonna have a great riot, it's not gonna be the Great Depression, it's gonna be great riots, and Herb Wesson sat there at the housing committee and let this all happen. I am so upset...
Madam President, he is not talking about this item.
Thank you very much, your time is up. Mr. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
All right, yes, thank you, and just for everyone out on Channel 35, let me clarify, it's Matt Dowd, there's, and there's a reason for that, too, and I'm gonna have to clarify, because there's already a Matthew Dowd, political strategist to George Bush, famous political consultant, Matthew Dowd, so in order to avoid that confusion, I just want to talk about affordable housing. Mixed income, so, yeah, these are the kind of things that we need, and we needed like five years ago, but unfortunately, Greg Smith was too busy burning the budget and destroying the pensions of all the city workers and the LAPD. So now the city's in this position where, really, they, they're out to get you two people with tickets, and there's no mercy at all, like there was anyway, but, let me tell you, when you have these narrow streets and all these things you wave, it just makes all these things worse. I've seen a thousand of these variances. Listen, colleagues, we need to vote no on this one, and this is one of those ones where you have to just go against the grain. And I have to agree with the other speaker about Herb Wesson, everything he did to destroy the affordable housing in the city. And the city attorney, I know he's just dying to cut me off, so I'll just deny him that, and I'll just thank you, that's all.
All right, there's no speakers in the queue on this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item.
Item 12, called "Special for," Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, and we have two speaker cards on this item, would you like the speakers to go first?
Please.
All right, Mr. Matthew Dowd and Mr. Zuma Dogg. Matthew Dowd, and then Mr. Zuma Dogg, is Mr. Dogg still here? Yes.
All right, thank you, yes, and I still want to point out the lack of agenda items for the, agendas for the public right now. This looks like a good one, I'm surprised this is coming out of Dennis Zine's district, but it's, it looks like a good one. A smart crosswalk, that's what we need, a bunch of them, 'cause there's not too many smart people out there. You know what, you know what the crazy, I hope this is not one of these diagonal ones that Bill Rosendahl put in at Venice. It's like, out of the whole city, though, the whole city's used to having these regular crossings, and then they all come to Venice, and they all just cross against the lights anyway, everybody's a renegade. But as long as this is something that Dennis Zine thinks is, you know, paramount to the safety of his district, and Greg Smith's in agreement, then I'm sure we can all move forward. Colleagues, thank you, and have a great weekend, this is Matt Dowd.
Mr. Dogg.
Yes, thank you, I'd like to applaud Councilmember Dennis Zine for his leadership on this item, that I had nothing to do with, but if I sit here and thank him for his leadership, maybe people will think that I'm great, too. It's the Janice Hahn for Lieutenant Government strategy. All right, so, first of all, the crosswalk is very important to me, I support diagonal crosswalks, because the problem is, you have traffic and pedestrians on the same signal. So the light will turn green along with the crosswalk signal, well, then if a pedestrian steps out, well, the cars can't make a right turn, and you have a whole lane of traffic, because one person is on the sidewalk, and then the next person comes. So we need smart sidewalks, I also say we need more diagonal crosswalks in the city, wherever possible, and to my colleague, Mr. Dowd, I will say that the fact that people will violate the law and cross against the light is not a reason to not use a good system. Don't punish the rest of us decent do-gooders because of a few bad apples. Thank you, Mr. Dennis Zine, more diagonal crosswalks and more smart crosswalks, thank you.
There's no further speakers. Mr. Zine.
I'm very pleased that two public speakers agree with this. Let me explain why we're doing this. There is a sports field in my district on Valley Circle, and the parents park on one side of the street, and they have to run with their children across the sports field, whether it's softball, baseball, or soccer field. And we made an agreement with the county to turn the area that's dedicated for flood control into a parking lot, so we can get the cars in a safe area, and the purpose of this smart crosswalk is so people will be able to cross the street safely in the West Hills area. Currently, they run across, it's a hazardous area, we've been working on this with the county for about four years, it's taken a long time to get to this point, and we keep on promising people are gonna get it done, so I'm very pleased that we're almost at that point, to install the smart crosswalk. Along with this will be the parking lot, so the folks that go to Bischoff Field on Valley Circle will have parking, and they will have a safe access back and forth across Valley Circle in the southwest San Fernando Valley. So thank you for that support, colleagues, and hopefully, we'll have that installation, we'll have that parking lot, and have some safety for the folks that visit Bischoff Field. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly understand the issue that you're trying to solve there, and we have those problems all over the city. Hopefully, the design, this might be something that you really weigh in on, on these smart crosswalks, because the original design of these smart crosswalks, I know, because I have one in a very dangerous area of San Pedro, was that the motion of someone stepping off the curb was supposed to light the lights up that are embedded in the asphalt. That seems to be a faulty design, and I have witnessed it time and time again, that, you know, it doesn't really happen, or it goes off when there's no one in the crosswalk. My suggestion would be, if, as a part of that, you could actually have the, press the button to light the lights up. I think that is much safer, and I think the old design, frankly, has some problems, so that just might be something you want to pay attention to.
Thank you for those comments, we will look into that. I know that in Glendale, they have that Long Island Boulevard, it seems to work very well. Somehow, our system hasn't worked as it should be working, but we will definitely make sure, I think we should have both, the push, the button, as well as the, some system that we know works all the time, and not just sometimes, so we will definitely put that as a part of it. Thank you for that information. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item.
Item 13, called "Special for Cards."
All right, John Walsh, you are our first speaker, followed by Matthew Dowd.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, quarter of a million visitors since September 3rd. Happy to show you the analytics, I have it right here from our server, we're not BSing. On this issue, you know, we had a problem with special events. Now we have anonymous special events. You're going to give to a special event sponsor the use of two parking lots, number 7 and 753, and all it says in the agenda item is they're allowed to park during this event, and the event, this sponsor will reimburse. Well, who is, and what is this? Is it, as someone told me, an event for Ron Tudor? No, it couldn't possibly be Ron Tudor, because, as you know, Ron Tudor built the police building over there, the one that's falling apart right now, remember that? I don't, notice when I get up here, I don't squeeze every second out of it, I'm a 60-second man, I can get off right here intellectually in 60 seconds. HollywoodHighlands.org, find out about the possible rioting coming to Hollywood from anarchists.
Mr. Matthew Dowd.
I don't, I don't see Matthew Dowd anywhere, but I will take Matt Dowd, that's me, I just want to point that out. And, you know, I don't want to take all the time, either, the other speaker covered it, have a good weekend, in order just to save a little bit of time for the city, I'll waive the rest of that, thank you.
No speakers in the queue on that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item.
Item 14, called "Special," by Councilmember Hahn, an amending motion has been distributed to the council, and there are cards on the item.
All right, we'll call back John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you still present in the chamber? And Matthew Dowd, are you here? All right, Mr. Matthew Dowd will be our second speaker after Mr. Walsh. All right, Mr. Dowd, the clerk has advised me that you've used your time for today. Mr. John Walsh.
I want to say, did you feel a love in this room during this African-American thing? Filled, compared to the dope dealers that were here, the scum dope dealers, 98% white. It was a big difference, and everyone can see it. HollywoodHighlands.org, and we agree with 14, we're in 14, we agree with everything today. What a wonderful event, and what scum we had here before.
Colleagues, this was a motion that I introduced last week to find out what kind of housing assistance we could actually offer some of the flood victims last week. You know, last week, we experienced in Los Angeles some rains that we have not seen since, apparently, the El Nino season, which was in the 80s. In San Pedro, there was an area of our city that got about two inches of rain in less than an hour, and apparently, our flood control system could not handle it, we heard that high tide actually was happening at the same moment, so, the perfect storm, so to speak, took place, and there was an entire neighborhood of San Pedro that was underwater, and about 21 families had their homes completely flooded, carpeting, beds, furniture, TVs, computers. I walked into someone's home whose refrigerator had filled with mud, it really was problematic. Immediately, the Red Cross offered them emergency shelter, but I wanted to know what our housing department could do to help them with long-term assistance. And I just wanted to report today how great our departments were in this little mini-emergency in the city. I want to tell you, our Bureau of Sanitation was wonderful, they were out there every day helping to haul away all of the muddy debris, people were taking their carpets and things and just kind of throwing them on the street, taking things that they had gotten completely rain-soaked, and putting them out in roll-offs, and our sanitation department continually hauled those things away, and got rid of them for the folks. They were out there making sure that the drains were not a problem during this flooding, they wanted to make sure the debris was kept from these new grates that we have on our, on our storm drains, I just thought sanitation was wonderful. Our housing department really went the extra mile on this, and they were out there going door to door, during, even during the rain, knocking on doors, finding out the damage that people had, what they could do to assist them, and helping to contact the property owners, to see if there was any kind of insurance that would kick in to help these people. They helped facilitate quick repairs, and I've been told that all the families are gonna be able to move back into their homes as early as next week. And our community development department also came in quickly and figured out how we could actually get some real cash in the form of vouchers to these families, to help them replace some of the personal items that they had lost. They were able to designate about $20,000 for that effort, and I will tell you, that Walmart kicked in $10,000, so with the $20,000, we're working with Toblerone Settlement House in San Pedro, to come up with a voucher system, to work with these families, so they can go and see if they can replace their computers, their TVs, some of the carpeting, their appliances. One young woman that I talked to, she was, you know, had lost, all of her clothes were ruined, so this is a great way that I think the city family has stepped up to help 21 families in Los Angeles to recover from what was a devastating storm last week, that absolutely came unnoticed, no warning, and wiped out many of their homes and their personal belongings. So I just really wanted to thank everyone, I want to encourage these departments to keep working on this, we're not out of the woods yet, there's another storm coming, and continue to work, of course, with sanitation on the larger issue of the possibility that we may need to look at improving the infrastructure of our storm drain system throughout Los Angeles. So I just really want to thank all these departments, you did a great job helping people in their time of great need, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's fine, no, it's fine, it's fine, we're good. All right, thank you very much. Now, before we move on, Mr. Kukorian would like to make an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. When I joined the State Assembly in 2006, I had many very capable classmates, including Councilmember Alarcon, but I'm pleased to have with us today one of our classmates who has risen from her previous position as a member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors to a member of the State Assembly representing San Francisco, and quickly rose within our ranks to the level of majority whip. I'm pleased to introduce to you Assemblymember Fiona Ma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kukorian. Now, our next order of business.
Would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the second special meeting?
Yes, we will recess the regular meeting and go into the second special meeting, and would you please call the roll on the second special meeting?
Alarcon, Alarcon Cardenas-Hahn, we use our... Alarcon, Alarcon Cardness Hahn, Wiza, Coetz, Kukorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present, Anna Quan, Madam President. Correct. Yes. This is a one-item agenda, Madam President. The first item is item number seventeen, and this is an item for which public hearing has been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is a card in the item, and the committee report has been submitted and distributed to the council.
Okay, and just to correct the record, Mr. Labange is not present. We do have eleven members present for the second special meeting. We have a card to speak from Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. This little thing was on my way out the door. We got recovery zone bond program, and it's about debt limit allocation. And I'd like to say that there, first of all, the CAO has announced that we have had now suffered four consecutive quarters of double-digit revenue loss. The CAO has said that the city was not pessimistic enough in its revenue projection loss. The city accounted for about a ten percent revenue loss. It's been much more into the hundreds of millions. And so, again, a double-digit revenue loss, four quarters in a row, equals a Great Depression. Now, we will be firing thousands of employees, selling off city assets, and providing what I believe will become an unsafe public safety situation over your lack of leadership. And now, we have the recovery zone bond. And first of all, I'd like to say, Zuma Dog, as quality and productivity czar, would like council to please notify the public during this item and this meeting how we can have oversight of this money, what it will be used for, and how we can look online for every dollar of accountability. Because the city has a really bad habit of taking federal money for things like recovery zone bonds and just spending them on all kinds of shenanigans. And if you doubt that I am saying fraud, waste, and abuse is the problem, well, just turn on the TV news when you hear Eric Garcetti say we're in a full-blown budget emergency. Thousands of people to be fired. And I think Barack Obama's going to want to know, hey, what happened to all this recovery money? I think Barack Obama's going to want to know, how come I'm hearing that the city's on the verge of bankruptcy and the only thing preventing it is a controller and city council president that doesn't want that B-word on their credit rating when they run for mayor? So, Barack Obama, please come to town. Your jobs are going down, even though you sent money for it, because these clowns are squandering it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
Yes, though, see, the business is never over for the weekend. This is about trying to get out of debt with more debt. So, we're going to issue more bonds, go deeper into debt to try and plug up holes. And quality and productivity czar, Zuma Dog, makes a good point. We need an online, some kind of public display and permanent record of where every dollar of this money goes, because we're putting people further in debt. See, the whole country's doing this. But to put it in perspective, see, the trouble that we're in, and it is a national thing, but that doesn't exclude the city of Los Angeles from liability, the elected officials for getting us there. But just for, to illustrate, the Haiti disaster, they're getting $1 for every $400 that the federal government bailed out Bank of America. And that's just Bank of America. Four hundred to one. So, the depth of the problem, I don't, you're not going to solve it by just issuing more bonds and collecting more debt. The way to attack the problem is to identify, like quality and productivity czar says, the wasteful and abusive practices in the city and the lack of leadership that gets you to appointing commissioners and people who are meant to be experts on finance, who end up putting the city in a position where two-thirds of every income dollar has to go to the pension fund automatically. Nobody can run on a thirty-five percent budget. So, you might as well go to bankruptcy and save the children's future debt.
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue on this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And our, this is the only item on the second special agenda, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, should we then recess the second special agenda, uh, meeting and then?
We'll adjourn the second special meeting and call the roll for the first special meeting.
All right, let's call the roll on that.
Alarcon, Cardness Hahn, Wiza, Coetz, Kukorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present, Anna Quan, Madam President. This also is a one-item agenda. Item sixteen is a closed slash an item, and the city attorney will speak to the findings to the item.
Mr. Arnold Sacks, is he, he has time and Mr., Mr. Sacks, are you present? Mr. Sacks does not appear to be present in the chamber. John Walsh, are you still here? Arnold Sacks and John Walsh neither appear to be present in the chamber, so I will put their cards in the official file. And there are no speakers in the queue on this item, so please open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr., uh, we'll have to clear the chamber. Mr. City Attorney, would you give us the admonition?
The council is authorized to go into closed session on item number sixteen, as reflected in the agenda description pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Sergeants, if you would, please clear the chamber. And council members, if you would, please, one deputy, deputy per council office.
We are back in open session. I'm quick if we can run through any actions or announcements from the closed session items, please.
Item sixteen has been continued to next Friday, February 12th.
The fifth?
I'm sorry, fifth.
Okay. Any other... that was the only item for us, okay. If we can go to next order of business, please.
Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting?
Yes, let's adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and next order of business.
Council has motions for posting your referral.
Is it posted and referred?
And the desk is clear.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President, I do have an announcement. Earlier, when we were celebrating African-American Heritage Month, we forgot to acknowledge Danny Bakewell Jr. and the members from the Sentinel. They're the ones that actually vetted the individuals that were honored today. So, again, I want to thank Danny Bakewell Jr. and the Sentinel for helping us put on a very successful program this morning.
Great, thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Parks?
I'd like to just publicly commend Jan Perry yesterday for putting together the fund, or the activities to raise funds for Haiti. She wore me out all day long, out on the concrete, but we basically were able to gain over $20,000 for our day on the street. But what was remarkable is about 5 o'clock yesterday, three young men, Korean owners of Radio Korea, showed up nonchalantly and left a check for $109,000. So, we hit over $130,000 for that day. They were our, one of the radio partners in this, along with 102.7, Channel 4, Hot 92.3, and also AM 570.
We are back in open session. I'm quick if we can run through any actions or announcements from the closed session items, please.
Item sixteen has been continued to next Friday, February 12th.
The fifth?
I'm sorry, fifth.
Okay. Any other... that was the only item for us, okay. If we can get the next order of business, please.
Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting?
Yes, let's adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and next order of business.
Council has motions for posting your referral.
Is it posted and referred?
And the desk is clear.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President, I do have an announcement. Earlier, when we were celebrating African-American Heritage Month, we forgot to acknowledge Danny Bakewell Jr. and the members from the Sentinel. They...
And what was it?
They're the ones that actually vetted the individuals that were honored today. So, again, I want to thank Danny Bakewell Jr. and the Sentinel for helping us put on a very successful program this morning.
Great, thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Parks?
I'd like to just publicly commend Jan Perry yesterday for putting together the fund, or the activities to raise funds for Haiti. She wore me out all day long, out on that concrete, but we basically were able to gain over $20,000 for our day on the street. But what was remarkable is about 5 o'clock yesterday, three young people, young men, Korean owners of Radio Korea, showed up nonchalantly and left a check for $109,000. So, we had over $130,000 for that day. They were our, one of the radio partners in this, along with the 102.7, Channel 4, Hot 92.3, and also AM 570, along with the, also AM 98.7, and the Salvation Army. But over $130,000 for that one day. But it was just amazing how they just showed up and had this little check written out, and it was $130,000 that would go to the Salvation Army, he's already on the ground, and 100% of that money will go to the Haiti Relief Fund, no administrative overhit. So, I want to commend Jan Perry for that.
Congratulations. And Mr. Parks, if you're still on that subject, if I may, I heard rumors that sometimes there would be a young lady who would roll up, or a middle-aged lady, and she'd say to Ms. Perry, "Nice to see you, but I really want to see Mr. Parks."
Well, that happened a couple of times.
That happened a couple of times, and those folks doubled down when they saw you. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, we had, in fact, one of the amazing things, at 5:30 in the morning, and then at 6:30, we were on Channel 4, asking people to drive-through, not drive-by. So, we said "drive-through." And a young man named Bill Gaston saw the TV promo, drove from Inglewood, and delivered a $1,000 check, and his only comment was, "They needed more than I do." So, it was amazing how many people came through, and we caused a little frustration with LADOT, and we'll probably get a couple of complaints in CD9 and 14 about the blocked traffic, but it was all worth it. One thing, Jan Han for being there, and Tom Labange for being there, and Jan Perry that put this together. But it was really a remarkable exercise. We tried.
Thank you.
Now, if I could make a couple of business announcements...
Sure, please.
Because I know that Jan Han doesn't like me to say these things, but one thing, we've had a significant problem in the 8th district on FEMA and reclassifying flood zones, and there will be a meeting along with FEMA personnel, the Congresswoman Waters, at the Angeles Mesa Elementary School Auditorium, 2611 West 52nd Street, Saturday, January the 30th, at 10 to 12. And we'd ask the community to come, anyone interested in this whole issue of FEMA maps. Also, as we approach the tax season, our Quantrum CDC is putting on a free tax day, and that will be at the Expo Center on Menlo between Expo and King Boulevard, and that starts on the free tax day. If anyone has an interest in it, call 310-693-6530. And then, don't forget Cash for College is this weekend also, and if people go to the website, www.lacashforcollege.org, you can find your local location to come out for free Cash for College.
Absolutely, and thank you council members for your ongoing support of Cash for College over the years. Ms. Han?
Well, I just really wanted to thank Bernard and Jan for organizing that yesterday with Salvation Army. I was only out there for a short time, but it was very heartening. Of course, I was there when Radio Korea came with the check for $109,000, which was really exciting. But the few people, you know, that rolled their window down and gave the money, it was great. It was a great feeling, and I think we gave people an easy, convenient way to give. Because I'll tell you, people want to give. They want to help out. They're not really sure how to do it. I mean, people are texting their $10 worth, but I mean, we, I think what we did yesterday was give people a credible organization like Salvation Army, who has an operation on the ground in Haiti right now. And it was great. I just want to thank both of you for organizing that. It was, it was great. I think if we had gone a few more hours, we would have gotten even more money. People were very generous yesterday. And on that note, I just wanted to, I saw where some of our LA County firefighters have returned. The search and urban rescue teams have come back from Haiti. I just really want to tell them how much we appreciate them going over there. There were some incredible photos coming across the TVs of, even as late as yesterday, of pulling people still alive from the rubble. So, we really want to thank them for going over there and helping out in this great time of need. I think Paul was going to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Gukurin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. If I may just dovetail on that, and thank Ms. Han for thanking the county firefighters. One of those Los Angeles County firefighters was Kurt Schutzy, my cousin. And actually, that unit had an opportunity to save dozens of people's lives while they were there, against all odds, miraculously. And some of those people that they saved were actually from Los Angeles. So, it really is an incredible thing that we send our first responders around the world, and they end up saving people right here from Los Angeles. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon? Do you have an announcement? Okay. Any other announcements? Are there any adjourned motions today? If I can ask anybody, please rise, and I can ask Mr. Alakon for our first adjourned motion.
Council members, I have two adjourned motions. First, Carolyn Smith. Carolyn Francis Smith was 67 when she passed away on November 12, 2009, from a brain tumor, which had been diagnosed only two months earlier. She was born in Los Angeles on April 6, 1942, to actor Richard Tucker and actress Irma Larue Olson. Her father had been one of the founding members of the Screen Actors Guild, and Carolyn lived most of her life in the San Fernando Valley. In 1958, she married Chuck Smith, and together they raised two children, Richard and Sandra. They owned a motorcycle accessories manufacturing company where Carolyn first started doing accounting and bookkeeping. She attended North Hollywood High, where my father went, and later studied business accounting at Pierce College. Carolyn owned and operated a bookkeeping and tax practice in Van Nuys. She enjoyed her work and often fostered friendships with her clients. Carolyn later married Herbert Regman, and they loved to travel the world together and spend time with family and friends. She especially enjoyed entertaining friends and family, and enjoyed having Christmas and Thanksgiving gatherings at her home. They enjoyed getaways to Kern River and Lake Isabella, where she survived by her mother Irma, two sisters Cynthia and Deborah, her husband Herbert, her son Richard, her daughter Sandra, and eight grandchildren. She was a great and devoted wife, mother, grandmother, and friend, and she will be truly missed. I also want to adjourn in the memory of Richard Joseph Hakis. Richard is my stepfather-in-law, and oddly, he is four days younger than me. Born on November 29, 1953, he passed away at his home in Sun Valley, surrounded by his family and loved ones, after approximately a seven-month battle with cancer. He had two brothers, Carlos and Tony, and two sisters, Adela and Gina, and he attended local schools. I forgot to say, he was born to Gloria Mendez and Joseph Hakis, as I said, in 1953. After graduating in high school at the age of 17, Richard left his family home to work in Delano with the farmworkers, Anne Cecil Chavez. He returned to Southern California. He worked at Superior Rim Manufacturing Company in Van Nuys. He was a strong union believer, and he attempted to organize the workers at Superior. If you remember, there was quite a turmoil during that time, and he was one of the leaders of the actions to try and bring better benefits to the workers. Instead, he was fired for his actions, and then he moved on to Truflex in 1990, but was also let go when he tried to organize those workers there. He then went to work at ITT Guilford in Van Nuys, and there is where he met my mother-in-law Maria, and they were married on Valentine's Day, 1993. Richard quickly took his role as husband and stepfather to Maria's eight children and two grandchildren. He quickly earned the respect of Maria's children, because he showed love for Maria and to the kids that he raised. For the past 12 years, Richard worked at Western Switches and Control in Chatsworth. He was a devoted worker, the one who never missed a day, even as he fought cancer. Richard and his boss Frank Martinez were not only coworkers, they were best friends. Richard never stopped attending classes at Valley College, hoping to one day fulfill his dream to become a teacher. Together, Maria and Richard worked hard to better their community by volunteering at community organizations. They helped organize with Naleo, a citizen workshop at Holy Family Church, to assist the community to become U.S. citizens. Richard also worked with UAW Local 509 to help the displaced workers when the General Motors Plant closed in Van Nuys in 1992. And when Cecil Chavez passed away, Richard organized to help get a bus so that Valley people could attend Cecil's funeral. In 2006 and '07, Maria and Richard marched in Los Angeles, May Day March for Immigration Rights, and they also participated in numerous marches in support of hotel workers and protests of the war. Richard and Maria were very active in the political scene as well. Richard served with me on the board of the San Fernando Valley Mexican-American Political Association Organization. They volunteered on many campaigns, including my own, of course. That was even before I was married to Flora, and in fact, before I even knew Flora, I knew Richard and Maria. They volunteered also to elect President Obama, U.S. Senators Boxer and Feinstein, people such as the man to my left, Tony Carlinas, and Senator Alex Padilla, Mayor Antonio Villarreal, and many, many more. You'd always see them together at political rallies cheering on their causes. Richard and Maria enjoyed spending their time with their children and grandchildren. They would often take them camping, to the movies, concerts, or just spend time with them at the park. Richard loved music and dancing. He was a very gentle man, one who would go out of his way just to say hello if you needed anything. He will be truly missed by his family, children, grandchildren, brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, and friends. I just want to say that Richard was my friend. Long, as I said long before I met Flora, Richard was an activist in the San Fernando Valley. He even talked about organizing at Cal State Northridge. I don't quite remember him back then, but he said he was involved in things like La Raza Unida, voter registration drives, and dating way back to the 1970s. He, although I knew him as a community activist, when I came to know him as my stepfather-in-law, I was truly amazed at what a wonderful person he was. The truth is that my wife had a very troubled childhood with her seven brothers and sisters, and Richard stepped in where the responsible father did not. He provided a childhood to her younger, my wife's younger brothers and sisters that was not being provided, except by Maria. So, on behalf of the family, we want to say thank you to Richard for really creating a family where there was disharmony and difficulty. Richard became a solid foundation for the family, especially the four or five, I don't even know how many of the siblings he actually raised, but four or five siblings. You know, and I thought about this, and I have to say that, you know, it's really good when a father is a good father, but it is really great when a father is a good father to somebody else's children.
Thank you very much. Put all members on that. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you. It's with great sadness, I announced the passing of Melinda Melendez. She passed away on Wednesday, January 20, 2010, following complications from a stroke that she suffered. She was a longtime staffer, close to 30 years, in the state capital of California, and she served in various capacities, including the higher education advisor and expert to Speaker Antonio Villarreal, Speaker Bob Herzberg, and many other elected officials. Her last responsibility in the Capitol was to be consultant to Democratic Senator Gloria Romero. She'll be sorely missed. She was a person that I met in the state capital, and even though I arrived in the state capital as a member of the legislature, she was very respectful and very appropriately helpful to people like myself, not only members of the legislature, but also many staffers. So, many people will miss her. She was a mentor to hundreds of young people who went to the state capital, and she went above and beyond the call of duty. And she grew up in the little town in the San Joaquin Valley, the little town of Dinuba. And she went to school in the Central Valley and did her doctoral work at Stanford University School of Education. And she has many accolades of her public policy, of which she would never take credit for. That wasn't her style, but she certainly made a lot of legislators understand good policy and implement good policy. She, the services will begin tonight, Friday, January 29, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., with the vigil service at 7:00 p.m. at Cusimano Family Colonial Mortuary in Mountain View. A funeral has been scheduled for Saturday, January 30, at noon at St. Simon's Catholic Church in Los Altos. She is survived by her son Joaquin Peters, her daughter-in-law Donna, and her granddaughter Madeline.
Mr. Alakon?
Joined with Tony in that adjourned motion, Melinda was a very special person in Sacramento, one of those people who, in the line of fire, would always be smiling and looking for solutions. She is one of the quiet people in Sacramento. You never hear a lot about them, but they are the driving force behind much of what goes on behind the scenes in Sacramento. She was just a pleasure to work with, and let me say that she was in charge of Gloria Romero's education responsibilities. And now that Gloria is running for Secretary of Education, I think that speaks well for her work. So, I also will miss her smile in Sacramento, and she passed far too young, and I think, and I have to say, she was absolutely dedicated to ensuring that minorities get better treatment relative to the educational resources that California can provide. She was true to her word. She always was looking for a positive side to things, and it was certainly a pleasure to work with her, and I will miss her.
Thank you. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I just wanted to adjourn today in the memory of Purnell Roberts, who died at the age of 81. There was a whole, there's kind of two generations of people who kind of grew up knowing Purnell Roberts. The latest generation, in, I guess in 1979, he starred in Trapper John M.D. for like seven seasons, so that was that group. But many of us of my age remember him from Bonanza, and he was the very handsome and the very level-headed Adam in Bonanza. So, I guess he's the last of those four, I guess Lauren Green, Dan Blocker, Michael Landen, and now Purnell Roberts. It's kind of an end of an era for that, those TV shows. So, rest in peace, Purnell Roberts.
Thank you. Do we have any other adjourned motions? Mr. Parks?
I just had one more announcement I forgot to mention.
Sure, absolutely.
Colleagues, Monday, 1:00 in these chambers, we'll probably have the most important budget and finance meeting for the year. So, we recommend that you or your staffs be present at the meeting. It may help you when this comes before council, I believe on the 3rd, that you be better prepared to deal with these issues. So, there's four major issues on the agenda, the number-one issues, the financial status report, our cash flow report. I just would suggest that if you can't be there personally, that your staffs just better brief you on what's going to be before council on this next week. 1:00 on Monday in these chambers.
Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the rule. Is there any? Okay. This meeting in Los Angeles City, as the council is adjourned, will next be in session on Tuesday at 10 a.m. Thank you, and have a great weekend.